Due to technical difficulties, audio for the first hour and five minutes of this meeting is of poor quality, and no video was recorded except for slides shared as part of the Penrose Library Closure and Renovation Update. Content Warning: The public comment portion of this recording contains explicit language.
Thank you. I called the meeting order at 5:03 PM. At this time, I'd like to stand up and introduce myself.
I am the President of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can you have a public comment? Do you have a copy? Do you have your copy?
I'm sorry we had a bunch of sign-ups, so I'm just trying to get the order correct. So if you could hold for thirty seconds while I put the finishing touches on, I would appreciate the board's patience. Thank you.
Well, at this time, I'd like to cut out of the recording that's completed. I would like to welcome Commissioner Brummer. Thank you for being here. And I see Commissioner Lightner online. Um... Thank you for being here. Thank you for being here.
Are you ready now?
Yes, I am.
First up is Teri Yulen. Can we just hand it to the corner of the table here?
Just a reminder that while we have time, we have to...
Thank you. Thank you, board members, citizens of the Pike's Peak region. We would like to offer a prayer for the U.S. Department of Defense. First of all, we want to thank you for your service to our city and our county library board members. We thank you for the efforts that you've done to protect the intellectual growth of our children and citizens of the Pike's Peak region. We appeal to heaven, to our Heavenly Father, to our Savior, the Lord Jesus Christ, and to our beloved Holy Spirit, to impart unto you, board members of the library system, wisdom, might to protect good, ability, efficiency, and wise and timely counsel. May the library board be able to execute your duties as gatekeepers with righteousness, justice, and ethics, supervising with discernment what materials are featured in our libraries to protect the innocence, the purity, and the wholesome knowledge of our children and citizens of El Paso County. In Jesus' name.
And Donna Robertson?
Hi. As you know, there's a large turnout. There's a reading pool. And let me read something that I got from Lori Thompson. You guys know Lori Thompson? She's just a sport girl. She said that she's been working with a board member of the Pike's Peak Library about adding inappropriate filters to Power Pass. At the time she began the discussion, the Pike's Peak Library District was in the red financially and could not begin the discussion on adding filters. I have an upcoming meeting with a member of PTLD to see what may exist filter-wise. That may be enough. Two years she's been trying to do this, okay? Now, if you can go ahead and afford to go ahead and put in 3D makers and laser cutters and all kinds of cool things that I'm not hip to, I love them great, why can't you put in a filter to go ahead and block the smut that is in Power Pass? Six schools have Power Pass. I call it corn pass, all right? Because the thing is, is there are things in there that are showing heaven. They are the ones who are going to go ahead and make our society something good. Well, if you go ahead and give them this kind of stuff, what do you think is going to happen to them, all right? You can see what happens to it because of the things that have gone on in the past. The main thing is that you're going to find out exactly what kinds of books are in your library, in our library, and you're going to go ahead and then make a decision or you're going to continue to break laws and let these books go ahead and remain on Power Pass? Or are you going to let them remain in the library? Or are you going to go ahead and do something about it? Let's see.
Tanya Reagan?
Yes, ma'am. My name is Tanya Reagan. You call her a free citizen. And, um, you know, I'm obviously supporting the children, supporting protecting our children. Just their young, innocent souls. They don't have the discernment or wisdom of those kind of tissues always that they see and interpret as real ones. Child safety is a concern for everyone. Ensuring our protocols and sites protect and protect more unknown and impressionable minors. But the United States Code makes it illegal for any person knowingly, illegally, or strictly received or processed with the intent to transfer, distribute visual representations of these drawings, cartoons, or paintings that should take minors into sexually explicit conduct or are deemed as sex crimes. The statute offers an alternative, alternative coupon test for obscenity with lower thresholds, lower thresholds than the laws. The first time offender convicted of the statute faces fines and at least five years to match up twenty years in prison. It's especially daunting that these books are not only in school libraries, but in our county and are available through the Power Pass or Corn Pass, as some people refer to. And it should be closed. This program from Pike's Peak Library Research and Media. An example of this is the book Gender Queer. Here's what your child will be accessing when that child is in the book some time and will learn their skills. Please shield our children from harmful material. Thank you.
Abigail Burton?
Hello, board. My name is Abigail Burton. And I'm a sister of two school-aged brothers and a younger brother from Colorado Springs. I'm here today to express my concern over a particular book that can be found in the Pike's Peak Library District and is available to children of young ages four through eight. This book is Iron Jabs, an autobiographical picture book that describes the true life childhood experience of Jared Jennings, also known as Jabs Jennings. The book starts out with Jared as a young boy that isn't quite fitting with other kids his age. He gets a paper color tape to like dancing, pretending to be a mermaid who needs hardwired and wearing a princess gown. This confuses him. And when his parents take him to a doctor, he is diagnosed as transgender, and he is told that he was just born this way. I have a girl brain, but a boy body. This is called transgender. Ever born this way. Jared is then socially transitioned to become Jabs, a little girl. In the book, Jabs mentions that at the beginning of the school year when he was Jared, teachers told him to use a boy's bathroom, but it never felt right. The book runs end with underlying being different, different special. Inside, I am happy. I have happy plans. I am proud. I am Jabs. But first glance, some might not understand what's wrong with it. After all, they might think this is just a harmless and cheap picture book that encourages children to be themselves. However, this is a book that is just plain. It's blatant indoctrination and misinformation. This will incorrectly paint certain interests as typical to only one gender, such as dance training, colored paint, lighting, colored paint, and cartwheels, being referred to girls. Many boys have the same interest, just that girls can have more boyish hobbies like fishing, sports, and games. A boy is a boy and can never be a girl. And a girl is a girl and can never be a boy. Tell the child otherwise, blatant lies and indoctrination. Children need to be protected from concepts that are set only to her sense, and this is such an example. The very unfortunate reality of Jabs is darker than anyone expected to believe. Jabs is portrayed at a young age pushing agenda in a backfire. According to Malcolm Clark, a prominent TV producer, due to the irreversible gender-affirming surveys by Jabs, he talks of some depression, binge eating, and anxiety. Malcolm said Jennings is supposed to avoid his children due to their problem in nature. Of course, the book does not go with horrifying, the horrifying humiliation that Jabs will repeat and have his life repeated, only in its key parts where Jabs is having fun and happy. This is intentionally and maliciously moving. A child with an undebbed brain can be confused and create those symptoms in mind that if they too are like Jared, they must also be like Jabs. We need to save our children. Restrictions in books such as these must be nated. A quote to end, a quote from Matt Walsh, but John Walsh. But if I do that, he'll stay in the book. Well, protecting your son, ma'am, is what's most horrific. Thank you.
Toni Yulen?
Hi. My name is Toni Yulen. And I'm a resident at the Penn State University of New Jersey. I believe that libraries are essential to our community. In fact, I've heard said that it can determine the quality of a community by the quality of the library. How the county libraries provide books and materials that can contribute to a person beyond what is provided from your parents and educational resources. All of these are not only for the betterment of the individual, but also for community. It is not the responsibility of a public library to be concerned with freedom of speech. It is the responsibility of an excellent library board to discern whether books and materials provided by the library will help its members become good, contributing citizens of our corn shops and should not be corn shops. This book, absolutely true diary of a apartheid victim, and other books that are being presented today, belonged in a corn shop, not a public library. These books will only contribute to conversion, rape, and perhaps even rent actions. He describes not only his enjoyment of masturbating, but he describes how he masturbates. One example, he states, is how he spent hours in Captain with magazines of naked movie stars. He says naked women plus my right hand. He thought happy, happy, joy, joy. Yes, I admit, I am, I masturbate, he says. This book is full of stories of inspired self-violation. Perhaps this statement from the world's most well-read book should be part of the county library's mission statement. It's often in Pauline's Four Days says, "Keep your thoughts fixed on all that is honorable, admirable, beautiful, respectful, pure, holy, sacred, as the man, woman, or child seek in their party, so will he or she." They all understand the meaning of true, positive, encouraging words. They produce the kindest individuals and recommitted to society.
Donna Bell?
Good evening, members of the board. I am Donna Bell, and thank you for coming. I am a mother, grandmother, and great grandmother. When my kids were little, she spent a lot of time at the library and we checked out a lot of books. It was an amazing year. Naturally, my kids are grown, and I go over to the library during our shower and I assume the library is still the same as when we went. But I recently found out how untrue this is. We love our kids, and I believe you do too. Did you know that porn causes depression, low energy, and both stimulation of dopamine production? And this messes up the brain. It literally causes the brain matter tissue. There are so many stimulation documentaries with adult animals like musk oxen or other insular animals with their young inside that hope circles the thing. It's to protect them from predators. Predators are people who are asking kids to think about things they would never, ever think about on their own. The Bible says, "Do not awaken love before it's time." This is good advice. If they were left alone, most kids would get interested in the opposite sex and eventually marry and have kids of their own. And that has been the way of the world and how we survived this species until this generation. U.S. Code Title 18 says it's illegal to knowingly distribute or make available to minors pornographic material, and it should be illegal. And yet, there it is. Forty-seven, U.S. Code Section 223 states it's illegal to use computers to display pornography to minors, but it happened. Thank you. To ignore or modify extended laws in regards to these books on the grounds of calling education no, that may not be tolerated. As parents and grandparents, we stand here in circle defense of our children. This is very important, and we are very serious. We are asking you to make sure law is being followed, and we ask you to join us in protecting our children and shield our children from harmful material. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
You?
Hello, my name is Ivy Lu. First of all, I want to tell you, let you know how hard I know how hard you guys are , as a board member. You get chipped out, you get spit on. I know how hard it is. But I also know you have the authority to do some great things. And I'm appealing to you in a sense of authority in a sense of...
Yeah.
And so, I'm asking you, a board who makes decisions about what our children are exposed to, that you think along the terms of who's going to yell at me last if I make these policies? Or what is going to be good for the greatest good of the community? That's what I'm asking you to do. And the legacy that you will have is that I made a difference in my community. I made a difference in the way the libraries make their policies in this particular time when it is, everybody's demanding your attention. Everybody's asking for a piece of you that is not based on goodness and the foundation of our country. That's what I'm asking. And I'm asking you to be aware of the fraud and bargaining water syndrome, where even four decades ago, there are things that were not acceptable on TV or being exposed to children that is okay now. Please, keep this being in mind for our children.
Julia Burton?
Good evening, board. My name is Maria Burton, and I would like to speak to you on behalf of an un-housed county young Republican, and also as someone who has related links to check out books in the library. I am compelled to share details of a novel entitled, "All the Things We Do in the Dark", to encourage you to reconsider getting access to such psychotic books for children. This book can be found in the Pike's Peak Library District for teens aged thirteen and up, and is available online and club. In the physical book and online, there is an explicit trigger warning emphasizing the content should not be read by young adults of fifteen years or younger, so via or by giving children unregulated access to such books. Throughout the evocative story, graphic sexual contents, rape of a minor child, violent physical murder of terror, PTSD, and LGBT are documented glorified details. This story is about a girl named Ava who was denied to successfully be mirrored into the dark and brutally raped by a deranged stranger. When she's a junior in high school, she unexpectedly finds the dead decomposing body of a teenage girl in the woods who was murdered and raped, who she instantly connects with and affectionately calls Jane. She constantly visits her woods and becomes obsessed with the deceased and the beat. And this leads her to take in hopes of disturbing chances. Allow me to read some disturbing snippets from the book. I had a good rape, the kind where I was young enough that it was definitely not something else was left, somewhere else I didn't want to spend. When bodies like mine and Jane's were violated, abused, assaulted, and molested, samples from her mouth, vaginas, and feces are collected. Ava professes Jane's corpse is rotted, even though that's pretend it's not. Her lips move soundless, but I can hear what they say. This is just some of the psychotic and disturbing contents that even as an adult, I am the thief of access to such books. It must be read by consenting adults who can differentiate between reality and imagination. I want to finish by stating a core warning in today's inquiry. What are unto them that call evil good and good evil? That put darkness for light and light for darkness? May we all be held accountable in psychotic literature. Thank you, Maria.
Julia Rush?
If there was anyone with kids in the room or on the screen, raised late, or temporarily covered their eyes. My name is Gie Rush. I'm a Colorado Springs constituent and have been speaking at, you know, public forums. I'm going to pass this around to the members. I don't know who they are. Apologize, I went online. If you just pass that around. No child can give informed consent. I want to make sure we know that going in. Secondly, I wrote you a letter which is in there with materials that are rough, and I apologize if it hurts your feelings. But the children don't get a choice. There is a war raging on our children through school programs and further through materials provided in the school libraries as well as in public libraries. This is accomplished via books, magazines, videos, memes, games, applications, like this book. This book is gay. In it, it talks about applications where kids can, and it's in your package, that can hook up, and there's a lot of sexually explicit language. It's offensive. No one wants to have sex with a bald, spotty psycho with balls like shriveled raisins. It talks about vaginas. It just isn't obnoxious. But again, this is in the library, and I'll explain that in a minute. Let me finish my letter, please. This cultural, ideological, and physical normalization of the rape of our children's minds and bodies has become a criminal effort. I call this crimes against humanity. Through the various materials you all allow in the hands and eyes of...
Thank you.
We're just sexualizing and making it okay. Indoctrination, medicalization, mutilation. And these things are happening because the attachments show you the end result. I would like to see the library create a firewall so that the schools through the portals cannot bring information to the public school for the kids or vice versa, so that the young children don't see what I just gave you, and they are not harmed. And I want you all to go watch The War on Children by the Starbucks family. They do the I-C-R-T that is literally raping our children's minds. I know this is offensive, but it has to be stopped because then if we don't, we are all complicit for the destruction, death, genocide, mutilation of millions of children. So I'm asking everybody to please stop.
Thank you.
And shield our kids from harmful material.
Thank you. Abby Gold?
Hey, board. We had a goal that Grandma goes to the library every three weeks. We literally send my little four-year-old grandson who has a twin-day see today, checking out about fifteen books each time. A well-known first lady asked about a decade ago when testifying to Senate Formations Committee, "What difference does it make?" I asked the same question of you today. What difference does it make? Tools in our public libraries. I've worked for over a year now with Dr. Savell from the Take Back Our Schools book project. I've read, I've organized by their ratings and categorized books that are being quoted today. I'm all too familiar with over a thousand books which need to be removed. My approach today stems from my extensive training and work as a child speech pathologist to change your behavior or a habit in the, or a habit in the world. It's titled, "I'm Not a Girl," or Born Ready. A story of a boy named Melody. And the little girl, and the little girl pleads with her mama, "Mama, how can we be a boy?" And that trusted adult tells the little girl, "We will make a plan to tell everyone, 'You are a boy.'" The alphabet books in question, tell us that L stands for LG, LBGT, Q stands for queer, T stands for trans. What difference is the braking system in your brain is impaired. Impulsivity, compulsivity, impaired judgment, inability... Thank you. I'm going to finish. The inability to inhibit inappropriate responses. That's what happens when this, this brain is washed in these kind of neurotransmitters. Porn can damage the dopamine reward system, making it more difficult to find excitement or fulfillment in healthy relationships. What difference does it make? Teenage suicide at an all-time high, mental health counselors in the need in schools are at an all-time high. Connect the dots, please. Whether of suggestive books, homosexuality, incest, violence in a sexual setting, porn ungrated reading material is not appropriate for our most precious citizens, our youth, and our future. We owe them better. There's lots to learn and fill our libraries with without resorting to the kindergarten that is entering the Pike's Peak Library System. What difference does it make? Please, you, the board, make a difference and remove the same issue materials.
Julie Yulen?
Hello, my name is Brooke Forrest. Thank you for the opportunity to interview me today. You're looking at, so I'd like to discuss the book Gender Queer. You're looking at page 138 from Gender Queer, which is rated five on the expectancy level. There's a hard copy of this book in at least one school of the eleven, but Pike's Peak Library has four books in numerous libraries, and it's all online through Power Pass for students in five school districts. It's rated for a thirteen-year-old. Do you have a thirteen-year-old in your family? In Pike's Peak Library District? This one says, "But I can't feel anything. This was much hotter when it was only in my imagination." Hey, Dee. Here you're looking at page 61 from Gender Queer, which is rated five. Material.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I wish I could be anywhere but here. I had had on my children and my grandchildren, libraries, fifty years ago, libraries were such a wonderful, wonderful excursion for us. And just, we never had to worry about things we think and worth it. They were wonderful. They were bringing my children knowledge and enjoyment. And it's not the way it is anymore. I am concerned about a book entitled, "A Good Idea, a Novel," which is currently found in high school, intended for libraries. The plot of the book is about a girl returning to her small hometown in Maine, seeking revenge for the death of her childhood best friend. There are sections of the book at times inappropriate and unnecessary to destroy, descriptions of sexual activities drug-induced, anti-God, and lesbian sexual themes. This is sexual part of it I would like to mention. On page 34, sensing my urgency, he dispensed with formality and got down to the awkward business of trying to pull my jeans up over my sleeves. On page 190, I came in less than a minute, my thighs shuddered, his whole body convulsed away, not alive, when I had gotten sick in the bathroom. Page 240, I took off her shirt and laid her down on the floor, unfastening her jeans, pulling them down, my hand between the legs. She whispered as I touched her, turning her face away from mine, grimacing and arching her back, fingers splayed out and flexed against the rug as her breathing came faster and faster, until she cried out, wordless, guttural, and I walked as she came and went to that secret inward place, until slowly she returned panting, opening her eyes.
Abby Yulen?
I'm at Yavah, right in Colorado Springs. I've been watching since I did in a library in Shutter. Anyways...
Darkness for light and light for darkness. May we all be held accountable in high school libraries. Thank you.
Do you hear God? If there was anyone with kids in the room or on the screen, raised their or temporarily covered their eyes. My name is Jeanie Rush. I'm Colorado Springs constituent and have been speaking at, you know, public forums. I'm going to pass this around to the members. I don't know who they are. Apologize, I went online. You just pass that around. No child can give informed consent. I want to make sure we know that going in. Secondly, I wrote you a letter which is in there with materials that are rough and I apologize if it hurts your feelings. But the children don't get a choice. There's a war raging on our children through school programs and further through materials provided in the school libraries as well as in public libraries. This is accomplished via books, magazines, videos, memes, games, applications, like this book. This book is gay. In it, it talks about applications where kids can, and it's in your package, that can hook up, and there's a lot of sexually explicit language. It's offensive. No one wants to have sex with a bald, spotty psycho with balls like shriveled raisins. Talks about vaginas. It just isn't obnoxious. But again, this is in the library and I'll explain that in a minute. Let me finish my letter, please. This cultural ideological and physical normalization of the rape of our children's minds and bodies has become a criminal effort. I call this crimes against humanity. Through the various materials you all allow in the hands and eyes of individuals, we're just sexualizing and making it okay. Indoctrination, medicalization, mutilation. And these things are happening because the attachments show you the end result. I would like to see the library create a firewall so that the schools through the portals cannot bring information to the public school for the kids or vice versa, so that the young children don't see what I just gave you and they are not harmed. And I want you all to go watch The War on Children by the Starbucks family. They do the I see our teeth that is literally raping our children's minds. I know this is offensive, but it has to be stopped because then if we don't, we are all complicit for the destruction, death, genocide, mutilation of millions of children. So I'm asking everybody to please stop. And shield our kids from harmful materials.
Amen. Amen. Good morning. We had a goal that grandma goes to the library every three weeks. We listen to my little four-year-old grandson who has a twin today checking out about fifteen books each time. A well-known first lady asked about a decade ago when testifying to Senate Foreign Relations Committee, what difference does it make? I asked the same question of you today. What difference does it make? Tools in and of public libraries. I've worked for over a year now with Dr. Savell from the Take Back Our Schools book project. I've read, I've organized by their ratings and categorized books that are being quoted today. I'm all too familiar with over a thousand books which need to be removed. My approach today stems from my extensive training and work as a child speech pathologist to change your behavior or a habit in the, or a habit in the world. This title, I'm Not a Girl, or Born Ready, a story of a boy named Melody. And the little girl, and the little girl pleads with her mama, mama, how we be a boy? And that trusted adult tells the little girl, we will make a plan to tell everyone you are a boy. The alphabet books in question, how else does the L stand for LG, LBG, TQ, Q stands for queer, T stands for trans? What difference is the braking system in your brain is impaired? Impulsivity, compulsivity, impaired judgment, inability, thank you, I'm going to finish. The inability to inhibit inappropriate responses, that's what happens when this, this brain is washed in, in these kind of neurotransmitters. Porn can damage the dopamine reward system, making it more difficult to find excitement or fulfillment in healthy relationships. What difference does it make? Teenage suicide at an all-time high, mental health counselors in the needs in schools are at an all-time high, connect the dots, please. Whether of suggestive books, homosexuality, incest, violence in a sexual setting, porn ungrated reading material is not appropriate for our most precious citizens, our youth and our future. We owe them better. There's lots to learn and fill our libraries with without resorting to the kindergarten that is entering the high-speed library system. What difference does it make? Please, use the board, make a difference and remove the damaging materials.
Hello, my name is Brooke Forrest. Thank you for the opportunity to interview today. You're looking at, so I'd like to discuss the book Gender Clear. You're looking at page 138 from Gender Clear, which is rated five on the expectancy level. There's a hard copy of this book in at least one school, the eleven, but Pike's Peak Library has four books in numerous libraries and it's online through Power Pass for students in five school districts. It's rated for thirteen-year-olds. Do you have a thirteen-year-old in your family? In Pike's Peak Library District? Libraries? This one says, but I can't feel anything. This was much harder when it was only in my imagination. Hey Dee. Here you're looking at page 61 from Gender Clear, which is rated five. Material.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing us to be here. I wish I could be anywhere but here. I had had on my children and my grandchildren, libraries fifty years ago, libraries were such a wonderful, wonderful excursion for us and just, we never had to worry about things we think and worth it. They were wonderful. They were bringing my children knowledge and enjoyment. That is not the way it is anymore. I am concerned about a book entitled A Good Idea, a novel, which is currently found in high schools and in the library. The plot of the book is about a girl returning to her small hometown in Maine, seeking revenge for the death of her childhood best friend. There are sections of the book, at times inappropriate and unnecessary to destroy, descriptions of sexual activities drug-induced, anti-God, and lesbian sexual themes. This is sexual part of it I would like to mention. On page thirty-four, sensing my urgency, he dispensed with formality and got down to the awkward business of trying to pull my jeans up over my sleeves. On page one ninety, I came in less than a minute, my thighs shuddered, his whole body convulsed, ate away not alive when I had gotten sick in the bathroom. Page two forty, I took off her shirt and laid her down on the floor, unfastening her jeans, pulling them down, my hand between the legs. She whispered as I touched her, turning her face away from mine, grimacing and arching her back, fingers splayed out and flexed against the rug as her breathing came faster and faster until she cried out, wordless, guttural, and I watched as she came and went to that secret inward place until slowly she returned panting, opening her eyes.
I didn't get a reading on those screens. I've been watching, I did in a library, um, anyway, I'm going to just read a few tidbits from identical that apparently seem to be appropriate for fourteen-year-olds that discuss incest and molestation amongst other things. Excuse me. Daddy needs something from my girl, my sweet rose, will you give it to me? I want you to see something, something that proves how much I love you. This is for you, Kaylee girl. Then he opens up the knaps on the fly of a flannel pajama. It stood up, stiff as the black night. See how much daddy loves you? Show me how much you love me too. Touch it. He closed her hands around it. Oh yes, Kaylee loves me, my little flower. Daddy had been, she had a vague notion that it was wrong, but she wasn't sure why and she knew who to ask. Daddy's love. She tried to sit up, but daddy pushed her gently back down against the mattress. Just stay like that for daddy. I want to teach you something new. He lifted her nightgown, rolled it up over her belly, poked her thoroughbred legs apart. She swarmed for a poultry protest. It was only his mouth that night. He didn't even ask her to touch him, prove how much she loved him. Afterwards, she worried, didn't he love her anymore? What had she done wrong for something wonderful, something every girl should know the joy of, though of course she shouldn't, you shouldn't learn it from your daddy. At ten, it isn't exactly easy to separate good touch from bad touch, proper love from improper love, a doting daddy from a pervert. It doesn't bother me, I hooked up with uncut guys before hooked up, just jerked off and stuff. I didn't want you to know about landin', masturbating, uh, other guys. This is the kind of stuff that apparently our children are reading. So please shield our kids from this harmful material. They really don't like it. Thank you.
Hello, thank you for your time and I appreciate the patience as I read state statutes. The state statutes were put in place to protect the physical, emotional, and mental health of all our children. The state statutes were also put in place through a structure of guidance to ensure no part of any text, including inappropriate sexual contact or offensive representations or descriptions of any type of sex act. Texts or minor children should support learning, provide information, and enhance or provide needed information in children's reading and current learning materials. Number one, materials means anything tangible that is capable of being used or adopted to a gross interest, whether through the media of reading, observation, sound, or in any other manner, but does not include an actual breathing device. Minor means a person under eighteen years of age. Number two, overt obscene means material or performance that, A, the average person feels that the previous person's interest in that. Number two, depicts or describes patently offensive representations or descriptions of ultimately sex back, normal or perverted, actual or simulated, including sexual intercourse, sonomy, and sexual bestiality. Or number two, patently offensive representations or descriptions of masturbation, excretory function, feminism, agenical, in the state of sexual stimulation or arousal, or the covered male genitals in a discernible, sturgeon state. State. And C, taken as a whole, lacks serious, lacks serious, literal, literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. Obscene device means that... Thank you.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Dr. William Sawell. Sorry, very sorry. I wanted to say one thing. You know, I, I'm a retired Army intel officer. Uh, I'm sorry. I didn't write anything down, so I'm kind of, I'm a weird, but, um, in this yet. So the office that I used to work with, uh, it was so bad because they got tired of going out and arresting folks because they were finding individuals that were selling out their kids, selling out other kids, raping kids, assaulting kids. They literally put their address up and said, just come here. Really happy to have you. That's how bad it is. So the reason I bring that up is because this is the kind of stuff that gets put in children. This kind of horrific stuff, that's what they grow up to think. Think that's normal, think it's okay, it's evil stuff. So this question here, I already said, what the heck is this? Kind of, kind of same sort with me and my kids. Kind of same thing I dealt with, or how I dealt with all of this stuff. And they said, well, you know, we typically put this out of Japanese and anime stuff and teen section, but we'll move it out. At least they did that, that's not bad, right? But it can still be checked out by a child. And that's, that's why we're here, we're saying, look, you guys have the power, you have the ability to prevent this kind of stuff from happening, get this up in front of children. So they end up being that person that thinks it's perfectly okay to have sex with, with other young children. You create that, that cycle all over again because it just gets worse and worse. So that's why I'm here. I'm asking you guys, do the right thing, stand up, fight for our children, just like we are. That's what we need. You will stand for God one day, whether you believe it or not. You will have the answer for it.
What's this? I am Georgie and am a tenacious teacher of fifty-one years and spiritual grammar of a myriad of kids. It is imperative for me to know the genre and context of the literature that they are choosing to read. Irish novel entitled Twins, which portrayed deceptive adolescent turbulence and trauma. This narrative is known for its wooden realism in addressing the grave issue of sexual activity, juvenile prostitution, and theft. The book looks to review rating in a five, which warns readers that it is illegal for a person to view this book if under the age of eighteen, yet fourteen-year-olds are allowed to read it. In short summary, the author Ellen Hopkins told five heart-wrenching stories of five desperate teenagers from different parts of the country who were in the narrative to the Las Vegas theme of selling sex. Three girls, two guys, four straight, one is gay, some from their beautiful families, sadly, some have absolutely no one. Like to ask, tan skin gets pale, ebony hair on blue-sky blonde, fingers touching hidden places we won't let clients touch. Powerful, that's how I feel, reducing them to masturbation. I like that they are masturbating for me and I can control when they come.
The books now sitting in public in school libraries do in fact break the laws as well as endanger the physical, emotional, and mental health of all our children. We are demanding the immediate removal of all sexually explicit books from school libraries and public libraries to support the curriculum and information from school libraries. No part of these inappropriate sexual texts support, enhance, or provide any needed information in our children's curriculum or free reading. There is absolutely, we are not in agreement that the protection of our children is vital, are we? If we are in agreement, then we must be united and maintain ethical integrity and good character as models for our children. It is our role with our children to provide healthy and educational texts that ensure their positive physical, emotional, and mental. Having public and federal laws keeps accountability, but without oversight, monitoring and removal when needed of any text that turns up in the libraries is creating children with exposure to harmful materials. Purge all to protect our children from these dangerous and harmful texts. According to Miller versus California Miller, after conducting a mass mailing campaign that advertised the sale of adult material, was convicted of violating a California statute prohibiting the distribution of obscene material. Some unwilling recipients of Miller's brochures complained to the police, initiating a legal proceedings. It was questioned, is the sale of the packs or describes, you know, patently offensive by sexual misconduct specifically defined by the applicable state law? And C, whether the work, taken as a whole, lacks serious literary, artistic, political, or scientific value. The court rejected the, quote, utterly without redeeming social value test of the memoir Society. Thank you. Thank you.
You'll be happy to know I'm the last one from the group. Uh, we appreciate you listening. So I'm going to just read the Word of God, I can hear chapter two. Honey, in those days, Paul's prophet to Rome reminded people, just as there will be all teachers among you, who will suddenly introduce, destroy, or erode, even deny the master who was them, bringing swift destruction of, swift destruction of themselves, many will follow their shameful ways and because of them, the way of truth will be aligned. And in their greed, they will exploit you as false arguments and twisted doctrine. Their sentence of condemnation, which God has decreed from a long time ago, is not idle, but is still enforced in their destruction and deepening misery, not, not given out asleep, but is on its way. For if God did not even spare angels at sin, but threw them into hell and sent them to piss of looney, rescued righteous lot who was tormented by the immoral conduct of unprincipled and un, and unboundy men. For that just man, while living among them, felt his righteous soul torn into day and day, day, sorry, day after day by what he saw and heard of their long past. Then, in light of the fact that all this is true, be sure that the Lord knows how to rescue the godly from trial and how to keep the unrighteous under punishment until the day of judgment. And especially those who indulge in the corrupt passions of the sin nature and despise authority. Presumptuous to the Lord, they do not tremble when they revile in God's majesties, whereas even angels who are superior in light and power do not bring a reviling to gaining activism against them before the Lord. For these false teachers, like I'm reasoning animals, mere creatures of instinct born to be captured and destroyed, reviling things they do not understand, will also perish in their own corruption. In their distrust and greed, they are children of a curse, abandoning the straight road that is the right way to live. They have gone astray. We appreciate you listening. We hope you will soberly consider everything that was said here, maybe you didn't know, and now you do, and you have to make a decision.
So nice to see you. It's been months, right? So one of the things I wanted to point out, we focus on budget approval and everything. In November, at the end of November, the, our eBay, eBay sales reached fifty thousand for the year. Actually, the eBay success, and I've reported several times, when we get, you know, these posts for auctioning, it gets like two thousand dollars for the, for the collection or whatever. So that's one of the things. The other thing is we take advantage of, you know, the holidays and everything. So the friends did have a Black Friday sale after Thanksgiving. We wanted to, you know, be like all the retailers, they will take, and so once again, our, our sales were a little bit higher because of that. But then they did take a pump in December, so I won't get that. You know, November, they did all their Christmas shopping and I guess they may sort of pulled off. Um, I left some marketing things for you. So the book sale, the March spring book sale is coming up, okay, the weekend. We always enjoy seeing some of you there and including the PPLD staff who come to the book sale. You're coming, okay, this is a zoo. This is a zoo. I mean, people are in there, just crammed in and you're just... Yes, they are, and they are in line, yes. So it's really interesting to come and see. So we ask you, um, to just come and be with us during that time because all of us come back to PPLD and we just love doing, doing that. We have our, we're just, come to the looking for the laser. It was very nice that you celebrated, like you mentioned in the report, that you celebrated sales. And not only did you celebrate, but you were also planning. How did you do that? Right, it's amazing, right. Thank you very much. The annual report book, Randy?
Eighteen more numbers. So the numbers that are, that are in this are the same except for I added an estimate to what our twenty-two year, I mean, number would be. And basically, I wanted to show you this time, you probably have a chance to read through it, it does have this year. So I just wanted to point out on this, the numbers that were presented at the, um, nine for January meetings of Purdue and Boston, we're actually saying, uh, we're actually changing the fundamentals, um, we're obviously minus, and so we're running it down. And the next thing, sixteen, um, shows the actual change, and that's a three-year comparative. Twenty-two actual, once the estimate, which is, we haven't closed the book sale, it won't officially happen until we're through the audit and then in June, and we should have a report, but have it right now. Um, these are the numbers that I'm showing, um, I believe most of all are included in the book. So you would have a premium seven thousand dollar ad for the print. Basically, seeing all the other information here, there's basically been an explanation about, um, a copy factor, I mean, how this company talked about the loss. And then, uh, power expenditures, um, reviews, personnel, operating, and capital, and then said we just support that, these are... And Scott, yes, that $700,000 of departmental expenses is in there, along with the elevator modernization of each, yeah. So, you would like to stop repairing that department. Do you have any questions? What I really wanted to share was the husband that's in here versus last year's budget, you know, whether this could be the work.
Yeah. I always liked, the history part, having so much information, I always think it's considered really, not considered, anything else.
Yeah, I did, I did put it together, it's a lot of help, so I can't, I won't take full credit for, you know, I'm the one that did so little, but there's a lot of documents that came together, and obviously librarians who probably offered a lot of the stories and stuff for us. So, this amount, and thank you everybody for all your help, this kind of thing don't happen without a lot of people.
If I may, although I think I want to, I want to share some of the helping with the, you know, budget, and did work on that, through the meeting as well, to make sure that it's, um, ready and ready to ship.
I wrote the history one, too, I answered.
Yeah, no, I thoroughly enjoyed it, I mean, I'm reading through it. So I did want to mention one other thing while we're talking about the twenty-four budget. So, I came across another error, and that was in our calculation, my calculation of Mill Levy. It inadvertently doubled the abatement amount in the calculations, so that resulted in us asking for 150,000, 250,000, 150,000, and 250,000. I brought that to, I'm thinking, um, a couple days of the state DOL, which is Department of Local Affairs, and asking for a remedy. And it basically said, the TIBL is not directly progressive, and the, and DOL is one of them, said, information that they had personally experienced, they heard, is the different solutions that the new one of them involves doing a temporary credit back to the taxpayer plus interest, and advised us to seek our counsel, and the loss separately, less than somewhere, um, so. Is that the total amount, or? Well, no, that was, that was the error. Yeah, so legal counsel, I'm not even sure the paper addresses exactly what the interest rate should be. Kind of, they've got a person in their office that's really an expert in this. One of their suggestions was to pay it back to the interest rate to remedy. So that would be roughly about, right now, it's about five, 25,000. So, whatever that number is, I guess at the end of the year, placed down below or near the actual sort of patient form, I picked up the number that combined the Mill Levy number with the abatement number, thinking that was the Mill Levy number. And then, of course, there's a slot in there for, no, the abatement number, I put the abatement number in there. And, and it resulted in, basically, that's how the Mill, or the abatement number got beaten. It wasn't terribly obvious, but it.
Anyway, when it came, thought it out to my attention, we tried to talk in, uh, through the, we, 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 uh, so, we even had a meeting to discuss that issue, people issue in the trouble, and, um, also appreciate that, that we felt, um, that was happening a lot.
Tamara had several good questions in that meeting, and she said, no kind of investigation, no findings, so. So, one of her views was, this has happened before, and everyone we've talked, they've suggested, this year especially, more so, attributing that to the changes in the process by the passing of the previous step, um, so. And they told me, it's like, it's happened before, you're not doing it, because I really...
And I just have to say, thank you for the experience. It's a, it's a, it's a, you know, and I'm saying anything, and, you know, you should have found out later, but you said, you're bringing.
So generally, what I always try to do is paper solution, or say, business policy's not happening yet. So, you know, I immediately put something in there that flagged, you know, those two numbers I'm looking at, go in there, and I use red, yellow, and gold, and him look at, she doesn't. So, that's certainly what I'll do, is if I find something like this, and it's, and it's mathematically formula thing, that it's usually something that, if I'm in that schedule that doesn't print out, you know, somebody's, it comes to see, um, to remedy it.
Thank you, because I was, you know, trying to, you know, trying to, um, to make sure that it's seen.
You need the word process?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Fewer questions about the budget? Yeah, this, this came out of a separate document. I couldn't quite fit it all into getting all this stuff done before me, so I was a little late, I apologize. So, this explains, and Angela, if you have any documents, documents, and I'm explaining how it's all put together. The first page is PPLD of the whole set, basically, we do our, next two pages are detailed out expenditures. Everybody else at the table knows this, but of course, this is the first time. This, this is a totally different format, by regions more, we had a library that's broken up into two regions, and in September last year, um, you know, made a decision to be all the library into this model, and got the budget fixed to that, but couldn't ever quite get that access I don't, so that's, that's what I did here. And so, you, you basically see all the recording elements coming up through, Kayla's actually in the middle of papers, the CEO, obviously, that's really administrative stuff, so. There's also designated fund, grants, and things have been restricted in a way, and it used to be cut under, and you see this in the budget book, special revenue fund, designated purpose fund, so that used to be the vehicle that we all used to track this type of things, and having, um, the rules changed, and they said, we're not doing that anymore, and it's all going to be cut up under the general ledger. While we still run the few of the same types of things, tracking all these things, we like to own the, the profit and loss statement, and so that's, that's how we did it, was to take it into the general fund, and that they did, um, seven million dollars in purchase in the first one. So, when we did our property, our tax statement from the county through every month, our staff accountant, senior staff accountant instructed us to break that stuff out, percentage wise, that we just wanted to accomplish, and not, the only thing that goes 100% to the other ones that go in there, but it all, it goes up under personnel costs because it's really a core, and, and employee contributions, that's the line, and, and the balance, and then the last page is this one.
I should, um, yeah, this is about the, the, um, I'm assuming, a lot of people are saying so much about the new year, and January, and, um, the new year, and, 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 and your life plan, or is that something that you're seeing happen to you, or?
Well, um, yeah, just, I'll, it's kind of deep question. A lot of red through this is because it's the first month of the year, and then, um, the costs are gonna, are gonna table the, the month, you know, sometimes we have three, and you just don't take the whole, yeah. But mostly, it's, it's just because we're in the first month. I think the, the tax bills went out later, and I even got a letter, I even got a letter from the president saying, you can expect to see a slow profit on this thing for a week, like actually, we didn't bill for it, and something happened, which we were at the same time. So, that will eventually catch up, like, February generally is our base of profit of the year, um, and so now, it's just the first month, coming to be the first page, you can see, that's our budgeted red, $700,000, and the general fund, $565,000, it's coming by, and then, my number for January is a natural, and, and, uh, some sign. So, it's, in the end, the full one will want to be bigger than this, because we do have the certain, and, 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 so, but, capital, and whatnot, it's all pretty much probably, and I can't use it for, um, spend, you know.
Maybe we have a question. The one that's been done, you know, is the combination of facilities and security, or security, or, because it seems to need a combination.
Yeah, so, here for, it's, it's, it's been coming out of facilities for budgets, and Gary doesn't, Gary doesn't buy the security stuff, Michael does that, and so, I thought it'd keep it a little clearer about who's doing what, who's buying, like, it's the same project.
Right, yeah.
Um, but we're living in these two separate places, and Travis and, and Gary have done a great job putting, you guys haven't seen this, but actually, it's, it's actually, it's Mark Chief, we started doing that as a, as a group, um, Travis especially, who did very well, and it's basically got, you remember, he's still in here? How many, how many projects have you set up?
I think we're at 22 or 23.
So, um, there's one, there's a floor of 100, and 100, 200, and, and, so that was happening out of contingency, apparently, I had to call the losing all that money, and spend it out of contingency, and so I, 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 facility, and Travis, and, 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 and the whole, the whole lot of projects on there, it's still.
How much we have listed, nothing to do with safety, and what are we using, is the, 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 and, 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 again.
It's a support services report, public services report, I'm sorry. Public services report. Any questions? I thought what I could talk about, since we've been doing the facilities master plan community input sessions, and a lot of times, the conversation has come up about, you know, could we partner, could we find partners, and so, as I was reviewing the most recent report for January, I just kind of wanted to point out, in some of those partners that we've interacted with this month, which includes a visit to United Way's Family Service, Family Success Center, um, a continuation of our partnership with Springs Rescue Mission, Fountain Library hosted the Fountain Valley Resource Exchange, High Prairie renewed its partnership with Silver Key, um, this, we did a partnership with the School for the Deaf and the Blind, and we made some donations that included organizations such as Mount Carmel Veteran Service, and we provided some information for the recent opening of the Shivers exhibit at Colorado College Fine Arts Center. So those are just some of the few that we interacted with in January, so we are doing our good stewardship in the community. Good job.
We appreciate it, and I'm sure they do, too. Thank you for highlighting those things, as people ask questions, they, that we do have that, against some. Okay, support services reports, communications, uh, did everybody read the reports? Did they want to share something? Denise?
Well, one of the things that we started doing, or to learn to make them up, is we are being trying to really engage with our community more on our social media, and we want to do it in a more efficient way. And so, I sent my social media manager to a conference in Denver, library marketing communications conference, and she learned there that the trend is less is more, and not necessarily about always promoting all of your events. And so, starting in about December and January, we changed our strategy, and one post that talks about upcoming events, and it's done in a video form, but then we do more entertaining. We have seen the number of posts go down, but our engagement and likes and everything increase, continue to increase. So this frees up her time to be able to do other things, and then you don't have a feed of people going, oh my God, there are postings, every last second. So that's one of the biggest things from this report that we've really seen, is that change has really helped us work better on our, let's go, the market board, yeah.
And if I may add to that, Denise and I had this conversation as well, that we, we are also, will be focusing on informing our community when it comes to our databases and resources we have. Very often, people find public libraries as a place of entertainment. Yes, it's some of it, but again, we're an educational institution, we have a lot of amazing databases, and again, focus also will be on that, for our community members to know that they have free access to very valuable, pricey databases.
We're going to start adding that to, not start, we used to put it in our newsletter, and actually, Colin and Jenny come to me and tell me we've seen a great bump, and, you know, access to those, and so I'm going to make sure that we add one at least once a month, and do more socially together.
And I have to tell you, I was out in the, I can't even remember where I was, but she says, I said something about the library, and being on the board, and she said, we love the culture pass, we just took our children to the Denver Museum of Art, or something, and, and I said, oh, thank you, yeah. So that's great engagement in the community, thank you. Uh, how about facilities? Anything you need to say, Gary? Have any?
I'll just say that so far, same creep, it's all nice.
I love that, glowing nicely, oh, a lot of play on words there. HR, do we have any?
Yes, Christina was here, yes.
Hi. I'm, I'm going to replace Heather tonight.
Okay.
Director of Ben's, some compensation. Um, just want to mention that we're wrapping up our busy time of the year, so we can do open enrollment, even the cost of living increases, lots of good stuff on our HR, so.
Thank you. Thank you for your hard work. Uh, IT.
So, with the big projects right there, we just touched on, uh, a lot of feature computers, a lot of new components on those, so that's done very well, your basic wireless currently, and all of our locations as well, a pretty good system of E-Rate project, uh, with probably, uh, the two DAX points, and that we'll roll that out, we're already done with, I think, East, and a couple of locations, so it's, it's going all, so.
Thanks. Great work. Uh, safety.
Um, and the things I would point out from the report would just be that, for the first time in three years, and from an outstanding flow of down 12 staff members, we are now one staff member away from fully staffed, and it's true.
Woo! That's great news.
And, uh, we decided to do a little dig on it, and that's what we're talking about. So it's really all.
Thanks. Great work.
And the things I would point out from the report would just be that for the first time in three years and from an outstanding flow of down twelve staff members, we are now one staff member away from fully staffed and recruited.
Woo! That's great news.
And we decided to do a little dig on Penrose, what we talked about.
And I really do like all the resources that as I read the reports on what's going on in the community, how we're helping folks, et cetera. So thank you. Okay, Ms. Tiana.
Okay, I saw you looked at.
No, it was just.
Yes. And like Michael mentioned, we'll talk more about the Penrose Library project later with him. But I also want to take this opportunity to thank a lot of individuals in Pike's Peak Library District. When it comes to Penrose Library, it's actually, it's been a team effort to make that place safe for all and to be able to reopen that. I also wanted to remind all of you, I'm sure you have received an invitation to check ACES reception on the sixth of March. Am I right? Right, I think it's the sixth of March. So at Twenty-One C Library. It will be great if you make it there. Again, John and Becky Medford are the ones who are sponsoring the event. And Regional History and Genealogy Team, Erin Barnes, she has done a fantastic job with that. Also, we had two sessions held, one of the facilities master plan, gathering input with our community leaders and elected officials. Today, one of them was today, it was a very engaging conversation, a lot of great ideas. And I want to thank Angela for taking the time and being part of that today. So we are finding a lot of, a lot of good data point. And as you know, that is our goal, to be data-driven organization, right? And make decisions based on data. And also, I don't know if you had a chance to read that PPLD Strategic Plan Progress Report, that's another report that we provide quarterly. Since as an organization, we don't believe that we do any kind of project such as strategic plan and let it collect dust. So and if you have any questions, I will be happy to answer. But also I want to thank Pike's Peak Library District Leadership Team, Administration Team, Management Team, and all the staff who have contributed into accomplishing those objectives and goals. So I'm just a messenger and reporting to you. But again, that's the whole organization that we're working on that. And of course, as one of the important part of access, but then in our strategic plan, accountability is extremely important. Not only externally, that we're accountable to our community members and taxpayers, but also we practice accountability internally, even at times when it can be hard. But that's, that's, that's our goal. And that's what we need to do, even when it's hard to make certain decisions. If it's a right decision, then that's what we should do and that's what we do.
And I can honestly say, as I read the reports, I was happy to see under certain areas, I could see the big bullets from the strategic plan. So that's very nicely done. It, I guess it highlights what we're doing and we are following the plan that we put together. It was a lot of work, so now I like what you said, let's not let it collect dust. So thank you, Tiana.
Of course, thank you. Any questions?
It speaks to your leadership as well. Thank you. Okay, board reports, governments.
We did meet and we talked about a couple of things. Chief Library Angles for the next year, onboarding new board members, and then just trustee goals. And what would that look like to make sure we're getting regular engagement with the community and the library district? So that's just it. We just kind of didn't come to any decisions or anything, but just talked through some things and. And thoughts and ideas and things like that.
None of the other groups met, correct? So we're going to move on in our liaisons. Is anybody online?
Commissioner Bremer has.
It should be, yeah, Tammy. Karen, is that it? Okay, trustee comments. Even having comments.
Well, Scott and I attended the foundation board meeting. And they are all very excited about getting reorganized and serving however they can for the district. So those are like, those did.
Good.
Yeah, so it's great.
And I went to the state of the chamber.
Yeah, that was interesting.
That was very interesting. And state of the region.
Yeah, we went to the state of the regions as well.
Are we done with all the states now? I think it will be next state of the city.
Yeah, that still needs to come.
No, we have not.
I'll sell under region. I have one door.
Yes.
Unless she would like to. No, I was going to say, I was going to say this when Tammy was talking about it. I did have a, you were talking about engagement. And I don't know if anybody mentioned it, but I want to say a thank you because a board member from Mountain View Academy reached out to me about their literacy night. And Laura helped me get connected with Carol Shear, who I didn't realize we had liaisons for each of the schools, which was very cool. So they were, she was, yeah, she's going to help get them set up for whatever they had planned.
Yes.
Yeah.
Great things to do in the community.
Because I know it's, you know, it's a smaller school and it was a nice thing to have them feel like they were being, you know, paid some attention when they were reaching out.
That's great. Well, I, you want to go ahead?
I have one more thing as well. So I just want to encourage everybody, if you haven't donated blood for a while, there is a blood drive Friday at Monument. I will be attending that. And so if you haven't donated blood in a while, it's a good time to do it.
Monument where?
Library.
What, the library? I didn't know we did that too. Oh, yeah.
There's a lifeblood of the.
A lifeblood of the community. Boy, we're very funky here. I do want to say, I also thank you, Tiana, for inviting me to go to the state of the region. I really learned a lot. And I did ask one of the commissioners, this is all great information, but there's what, five hundred people there, maybe a little more? How do we get that to the other seven hundred thousand that are out there in the community? She did tell me that they are, I guess they're going to create a space on their website for that. So and I don't know if it's going to be, how it's going to be streamed. But and, but they had a wealth of information of what's going on in our city, sometimes in our county. Sometimes we get a little, I guess I get on my negative side thinking, what are they doing? We need this. And especially when I hit those darn potholes. But anyway, they are working hard to take care of us. So that was good. And then I also attended the Shivers unveiling of the artwork of Mr. Shivers. And that was very nicely done. They did commend the library in their saying that they were very happy with their input and how they handle things. So that was very nice. It was a very nice evening. So that's about it. Okay, moving on. Oh, presentations. We're going to start off with a presentation from the board and Debbie's going to take that.
Well, if you think back to December, if you remember, we were all pretty busy with budget stuff, finance stuff, talking about Penrose, all of the stuff that was going on. I don't know about you guys, but I felt like there was a lot of library stuff going on. But even while all of that was happening, Tiana was finishing up her latest master's degree in library sciences. Is that correct? Yes. And so we just wanted to take a moment to recognize you for somehow functioning with no sleep or apparently whatsoever. And I mean, I don't know how you did everything. But I, we really appreciate your dedication to getting that finished on top of all your other responsibilities. And we really appreciate all the work that you do and your effort. And so. Queen for a day. Or at least now.
We sometimes forget to celebrate and congratulate each other for the great work that gets done.
Oh, thank you.
With that, we will begin the presentation. The real presentation. And we're going to have the introduction of new staff and staff promotions. And I guess we're going to begin with Courtney?
Yes, yes. Courtney Duser, did I say correctly? Kay. So she's our interim senior director of development, executive director, foundation. And I know it's a long time, I know. So but I want to take this opportunity and thank Courtney for taking on this role. She has been already making quite a bit of progress when it comes to foundation, our relationship with foundation. And I would let her say a few words about her background.
I'll send that to them. Please. I can read your head. So I was, I actually previously worked for PPLD Foundation briefly here in case twenty-one, twenty-two. I love our community and I am so grateful for this opportunity, a backseat in this capacity. There's just so much that we can do for the foundation. And I'm very excited to, you know, have played a role in that and I can't just have this opportunity. So thank you all for coming up. Tiana, Tammy, thank you both very much for the call back. Yeah, if you have any questions, anything I've got, any ideas, foundation-wise, please feel free to reach out to me. I'm the one with the extra long title.
Thank you for taking on that role. Next. Put on these crazy glasses. Michael?
All right, I actually have, they're not on here, but I actually have two staff members that I'm going to be introducing to you tonight. I'm going to start with Travis. Everyone knows I hate last names, but Tilly? Yes. As keeping with the trend of long names for job titles, we love here at PPLD. Travis is our new safety community resources and security training coordinator for the district. And this is a position that we've been trying to get into the district for about four years. And as part of the reorganization with the safety and security team, we were able to realize that and we were over the moon excited. So brief history, when we, when I took over the position five years ago, the full encompassing of safety program in Pike's Peak Library District was done by a twenty-hour a week employee out of HR. And then when we created the safety team and exploded everything that we did, it really took away from the officer's ability and supervisor's ability to focus on security while they were doing all the new safety stuff that we were super excited about and kept expanding. And then we just hit a plateau. We couldn't do any more safety stuff and we really wanted to. And here's Travis. So Travis actually came to the district in November of twenty-two. He was an officer down at our Penrose team and has an absolute passion for keeping the staff safe and training them and visiting the branches. And I can talk about him all night, but if he wants to say a few words.
Yes, thank you very much. Like I said, Travis, I come back to his experience in security law enforcement and everything like that. Pentacles of my career, I was on the security, he's the president of Bush as well as president of law. And I like to utilize all my training and space and put it forward into the community, into the district as well. That's really all I have.
Thank you.
And then also as part of our reorganization, I begged and pleaded and said, I need a position that I just want a title of help keep Michael sane. And HR told me that wasn't specific enough. So we created a security manager. And Kevin Moss has been with the district since two thousand and sixteen on our security team and is beloved district-wide. And just can't say enough about what Kevin's done for the district and what he continues to do for the district. But he has stepped in as our, as our district-wide security manager, handling the day-to-day functions of the security team. Supervisors all report to him now, giving me just a tiny bit of breathing room, which is so great for him. Kevin, do you want to say anything?
I just want to say I've enjoyed my time as a PPLD. I wouldn't still be here after all these years without it. I did start as an officer and moved up to a senior security officer in twenty-seventeen, then into a security supervisor in twenty-eighteen, to the security coordinator role in twenty-nineteen, which wore many hats, it's like those. And once I came to the department, took on every challenge that you throw my way. So when this position was created, I definitely wanted to throw my hat in the air for it and support my team as much as I could because I'm just very passionate about PPLD and the safety and security of our staff and our patrons. So I'm happy to be in this role.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. Next is Gigi.
I have the pleasure of introducing you to two new interim managers, who we are very excited to have in their roles because we've got a lot of stuff going on. So the first person I want to introduce to you, also, I got the look and they're not going to announce themselves. I got the bios ahead of time and I'll share a little bit. So our first interim manager is Takiya. And she is serving in the Penrose role. And so she is like leading a lot of the project and coordinating the staff and just doing a lot of like really great things over there. And so a little bit about Takiya, she came to the library district in twenty-fifteen with a big background. So she's worked in libraries in North Carolina and Louisiana. And then she worked in the regional history and genealogy department for quite some time, where she was a special collections cataloguer. But she also, this is really cool and I'm excited about this. She revised the addition of the Invisible People of the Pike's Peak Region. And she worked with John Holly and conducted an insightful interview with, I'm sorry, she didn't work with John Holly, but she worked with Noel Holly. And for the chapter highlighting the impact of John and with Holly in Colorado Springs. So during that time, she also like worked and with Erin, is that right? Erin Barnes? And they led the department in some transition. So anyway, we're super excited to have her on board. She's done a really great job over at Penrose, so we'd like to have her. And then the other person I have the pleasure of introducing you to is Tracy. And she is filling in interim and doing a really great job at Old Colorado City, who is also going through some transition time as well. And so she's doing a great job, we're throwing a lot of stuff at her, managing, you know, like patron, like uptick in, you know, patron use at Old Colorado City. And so she's leading her team there very well. And so a little bit about her, she graduated from San Jose State University with her master's degree and has worked for the past eight years in two different library systems here and then also in LA County Library System. So and then moved her, her husband and their, their lovely pet. I'm excited to tell you their name. It's Arthur McTager Tot. They moved to, I know, I'm sorry. They moved here in July of twenty-two, where she started her career with PPLD as a children's librarian at Penrose. And so I'm really excited that they're both on our team and happy that I got to introduce them. So thank you.
Thank you very much, ladies. Thank you. Okay, and I guess now we have the Penrose library stuff.
Yes, and I don't know if I stand for this. And I will be talking about that with Michael Brenner. And I just want to give this warning that we have some images there that can be disturbing from Penrose Library. So if you, you know, just if you see that and something triggers you, please feel free to excuse yourself. So and I, as you know. Okay, here. I'm going to be doing this. Background, right? We've got a lot of questions. Why, why are we doing what we're doing when it comes to Penrose Library? And of course, you, you're aware that safety and security continue to be issues at our downtown location. Very often, we, I personally heard quite a bit of, from the community members that that was a library problem, what was happening and we need to address that. So as an organization, and as you know, with your approval, we started renovating Penrose Library.
There's just a delay.
There are some of the pictures that you can see those certain issues that we face at Penrose Library. And I don't think these pictures require any interpretation. So I will have Michael to talk about that, some of them, because these images we selected. So I will have Michael to talk about that, some of them, because these images we selected from from huge library system that we have when it comes to incident reports. That's why we could not wait any longer. We knew we had issues at Penrose Library and we need to address that. When I got a call uh from Michael that one of our security officers had to go to ER because of the assault. When there was a uh knife fighting behind our shelves um in December, it was really hard. It was, it's hard to realize, it was hard for me to also just to, to have this knowledge that there are individuals who've been impacted. And then as an organization, it is also our responsibility to address some of the concerns that we can. And again, I want to take this opportunity and take, thank all of you, the Board of Trustees, for your support and for also ensuring that we had funds to do so. Michael?
Yeah, so we, we give our, our incident trackings to the board on a monthly basis on what's occurring in each library. And we see activity across the entire district. But you'll notice on every single one of those, every month, the overwhelming activity that we see is at Penrose. And that hasn't changed for, for quite a while. It's drastically reduced in the last couple of years, but it's not safe. And and we do everything we possibly can to do that. But there's fundamental changes which we've, we've talked about and we've not been secretive about that, that have to occur and we're really excited to be doing those. The images that were presented there were only from Penrose Library and were only from twenty-twenty-three. Um so those were just from Penrose and that was just from twenty-three. And that's just, we just grabbed a couple. I mean, we've got hundreds of photos of, of each of those events that occurred. Um we've seen a significant increase in our um drug trafficking downtown. We've seen a significant increase in our overdoses. Mostly because of the use of fentanyl across the entire county. It's not a Pike's Peak Library District issue. It's a United States issue and it's a Colorado Springs issue and it's a downtown Colorado Springs issue. And um we need to make sure that we're being proactive as much as possible. Everything that we're doing is not going to ensure that these things that we're showing you stop. But they're going to give the staff and the security team as many tools as possible to do everything that they can to make sure that they're reduced.
And there are some of the solutions how we're addressing the challenges in, in, in Penrose Library. Shortening rear-end shelving to increase visibility. That is very important. Currently, we don't have that. That's why that knife fighting happened behind the shelves, because it was impossible to see that. Replacing rear-ended seating and tables. Again, that's to help our staff and also patrons to have the visibility and to ensure that everybody feels safe and that Penrose Library is a place for, for all, for all our community members. And of course, update all security hardware. Um as you've noticed in one of the images, personal belongings. Again, we are looking at our personal belongings policy and also food and beverage. Uh there is a team of individuals who are looking at that, making changes. We are going to tighten those and obviously after we review it, we'll come to you for your approval. But that's also very important and we are, we're going to make sure that we have the storage there for individuals to store their belongings. And uh of security operations center that um we talked, I think, was it, oh, it was at the facilities master plan session. So we do have it right now at East Library and that was Michael's um I believe goal or dream for years. And it also will help us to monitor and respond to security situations at all locations during open hours. And why we're saying during open hours, right now, we don't have resources to staff that um space um while we're closed.
It's amazing. Nobody does anything about it. The library wants to close. So it's really, you know, it's been great that they don't do that.
Right. Of course, install fencing under stairwells and around their property's per- perimeter. Why we're doing it again. Every morning when our staff comes to Penrose Library, they have to clean up there. Um and it's, we talked about for our staff to be equipped and that's why we're going to move staff to strategic locations. Remodel the computer lab. And as all of that, what you see there. And it's very important to mention remodeling of children's area. We want to make sure that everyone is safe and especially our children are safe when they're in that space and uh play or read or whatever. So that's also a plan that we want to make sure that they are protected from certain influences that we don't want them to be exposed to. That update access control has been Michael's project, I don't know for how many years. So uh we, we will be, we are taking care of that as well. And um increased security officer pay and fill open positions, that's been, that's been a problem for us for many years. That's what Michael said. So I greatly appreciate also for the support uh that you provided to us. And also, I want to take this opportunity and thank Erin Salt. That happened while he was the president. I did call him and asked him what, I don't know what to do. We don't have security officers. And um that's when we started discussing that what are the ways we can provide and do as an organization to attract quality security officers also retain. So that's, and I'm so glad we have only one vacancy, right, Michael? Is there one? So that's amazing. And uh it's already happened, uh removal of city benches. Um that also, there are certain activities happened there. Um uh when we were closed and it impacted uh our safety and security as well. So thank you, Michael, for making sure that was done. And of course, update our signage there. Why did we need to close? So uh when we had an internal meeting and there were a lot of stakeholders at that table. And I, I asked them, what, what are the ways we can ensure that this place is safe for all? One of the options was we need to shorten their shelving units. But the price tag they gave me to buy new short like units was over four hundred thousand dollars. I was sitting at the table, I'm like, it's impossible. We don't have those funds. But again, our amazing team members like uh Greg Rose, um he came up with a solution that, hey, we can do it in-house or we can have a local vendor who can help us with that. That's why we needed to close the library for two months, because we're using current shelving units. But making those uh shelving units more modern, that's what I would say, I guess, right? Um and, and as you know, we close the library on the first of February. And we do hope that we'll be open, able to open about, now I think it will be less than eight weeks. And the, another important part of it is that, that work will continue throughout the year. That shelving portion will be done now, but we won't need to close the entire library. There will be certain sections closed to accomplish that. And um I did get a compliment from uh uh Commissioner Bremer regarding our messaging to the community when we close the Penrose Library, how well it was done. And I want to thank Denise Abbott. Her strategic thinking and planning uh paid off. So thank you, Denise. This is the progress. Right. So um and if you see that, like, again, it will be better looking than what you see now, because I guess we are waiting for
We still need caps and retops and end caps. And there's a lot of other changes in that little section. There's probably not five or six changes that are that are occurring before we reopen. But
Yeah.
That for, for reference, that's a doorway in the background.
Oh, okay.
You can actually see, that, that gives you an idea of the height of the shelf.
Yes. Right? Do you want to continue?
Yeah, so we, we knew beforehand, we had a really good idea that um we were actually gonna be able to, because Greg is a mastermind at this, put more collection down at Penrose than was there before. And we did anticipate that we would get um questions from the community while you're reducing your shelf size or you're gonna be reducing the collection. The answer is um astoundingly, and obviously now, no, we are not. We have more space and we're putting more collection there than was there before. So we're actually increasing what the patrons down at Penrose Library will be able to browse and will be able to see on hand at that site and increasing safety and security at the same time. So it's one of those conjunctions when everything comes together perfectly.
Oh gosh, what are you gonna do?
We're just gonna do those, those.
Oh yeah, here.
Um so some of the things, as, as Tina said, it's really important to understand that um this is a year-long project. Right? This is the first phase of that. And it's gonna, it's a big phase. It's big improvements in that phase. But there's other big improvements coming down the way as well. But what we've accomplished as of now is, as every shelf section is torn down and sent out to the contractor to reduce, um our CDM cleaning team is uh shampooing the areas, making sure it's super clean before everything comes back in. Our internal facilities team is doing an amazing job patching the walls, painting everything, making sure everything is as crisp and clean as we can for when we reopen. Um Gary and Travis's team, um we're able to complete the irrigation work that we needed to do, which is going to be affected by our fence outside, um depending on the areas we put it, as well as the boulders that we added. Um so we had to move some irrigation around to make sure that we were able to put in some concrete escape from some emergency doors. And when we added those boulders for protection, they weren't gonna kill the grass. Uh we're moving our security office to a new location down by the computer lab. We're putting our telephone room upstairs in the actual staff area. This just makes more sense for everyone. Um we're actually moving the PPLD friend shelves down towards the middle of the um library over towards the west entrance. And that will be completed during this process as well. And that's actually increasing their shelf space as well. And it's not tucked over in the corner, so it's gonna be much more invisible. It's gonna be right out in front for everyone to see, which we're excited about as well.
Yeah.
Um we're also moving the community resources desk during this time. Well, there's a security officer. Helping out with signage. So, so we're removing the community resources desk over into the bay, so that it's um uh another resource desk that's right there that we can make sure we're available to patrons and we're also providing visibility of some of our problem areas. As Tina said, we've removed the public benches out front. We're updating the signage and you can see, I think that's Dustin right there working on some of the signage. Um security hardware swap out has begun. That's gonna be a seven or eight month long process. Um we've begun that and we're continuing it every single day. I was covered in drywall dust before I came in today. Because we're working on that and that will continue. Um cabling installation for the new locations and the hardware that we're installing. That's begun and will probably be completed by the end of this week. And we have started the work in the computer lab of the reduction and some of the reorganization. And then the actual remodeling of the computer lab will take place on I think it's August, September, when we're starting that. And then that, that starts, kicks off a whole slew of construction from then through the rest of the year on all of our projects. We wanted our patrons, when we reopened, to get used to a reduced number of computers in that lab and a new setup in there before we actually started with that construction process.
So, as I mentioned, there were so many individuals involved in this project, in this project. And I didn't trust my memory, so I asked Jeremiah, who put this presentation together for us, thank you Jeremiah, to actually give thanks to all those individuals who worked so hard to make this possible. So, and again, I, it's, it was a huge project for Gary and Travis. That was something that literally I dropped on their lap and I said, it needs to be done. But thank you, Gary. Thank you to your team that um you worked with all of us and despite your busy schedule, uh you're making it happen. Because as you know, when you're in charge of facilities and there are so many other projects and you need to prioritize, right? So I know it was a lot of pivoting there to make sure that this happened. Um and I already mentioned Greg Rose and Jenny Pierce. Amazing, this, I don't know, they have this brain that I don't. They think about details and they think about ways how they can save money but deliver an excellent product. So that's Greg Rose and Jenny. And um Justin Goodwin, the same, when we talk about IT and all of that work that happens behind the scenes, sometimes you do not see those cables or that, whatever you guys do. What I said, because I know that when we hear about wiring, cable, right? It is something that it's hard to relate, uh especially if it's, if you're a towner. But thank you very much, Justin, for all of that. And Denise Abbott, the communication staff, Denise worked tirelessly. I got calls from her, weekend Sunday, because she had an idea and like, I think we need to do this. Would you please make sure you do that? So thank you very much for thinking about it, how to message this to our community, for everyone to know that we're doing this for safety of all. Uh and of course, you know, Randy Green, that was the same. Randy, we need this project to be done. And of course, this project requires funds. Thank you very much for working with us and identifying funds that uh you're allocated to this project. I want to, I, I know that Tammy Sales' name is not here. I don't know why I did not put your name there, Tammy. It wasn't on purpose. But thank you, Tammy, Tammy, for working.
I'm just happy Michael was project.
Tammy worked with her public services team, with Janina Goodwin, with uh Michael Asma, Takia, Jen, Tak- Takia. She, she took over Penrose Library to be a manager doing all of this. And it was like, here it is. It needs to happen. So thank you very much. Um and again, um thank you, everyone. And I apologize if I, if I forgot someone to thank. But again, uh it's a very important project to complete, to ensure the safety of all. And then uh next uh for twenty-twenty-four, I'm already looking at other libraries and identifying libraries with uh, with leadership team that we do need to the same project when it comes to shelving. But right now, I know it, it won't cost us as much. So it's more feasible. Um that's um, I, you know, that's very important. Again, thank you very much to all of you, Board of Trustees, for taking safety and security of our patrons and staff so seriously. Any questions?
Great job. Yeah, it is a great job. And uh you go in there, it's really looking great. Uh I do wanna thank Erin. Uh I can still remember when we were having an internal affairs meeting and he had stuff on security or safety and I'm like, why isn't Michael attending? And we got that going. And I do appreciate Erin having that on the agenda, because then Michael came in. I never realized that we were back in the eighties, yes. You know, when you think about the technology that's available today. So I thank you for bringing it to the forefront. I know uh sometimes you don't wanna say what we really need because dollars are scarce. But, and I thank Erin for bringing it to us, because now we're making it a reality to get uh be more, have a safe place for all our patrons. And it will continue through other libraries as you have said. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Oh, we're at the, almost at the end. These are consent items. These, these are all the Board of Trustees meeting and all we, if everybody has read them, all we need to do is say yay, right? I, do we have to have a?
We don't have to have a.
Okay, so uh this is, did anybody have any questions on the minutes if they read? I guess I should ask that. If not, is there anything else that we need to uh bring to the table right now? Any other items or Scott, any questions? Erin, any questions? Anyone? You mean Erin, not Erin.
I'm good. No questions. Thank you. We're good. I'm still blushing over here from you guys earlier.
Yeah, I bet. So anyway, with that said, we are adjourned at seven twenty-five. I pray that we don't have this long of a meeting again.